Looks like Gary's selling audio problems.
Yeah. I'm gonna call him.
He can use his phone for audio if it ends up being a problem.
Sure, he can just call in.
He can call in. You can either just use his phone for everything or call with his audio and then use it for video, whatever. A lot of people have done that. And then when, um, Larry's saying.
Hey, do me a favor. Do me a favor. Are you still on check to hear?
Oh, yeah.
Let's go to Zoom, because I have a few mics open.
Okay. Do you want me to try broadcasting yet? It's, well, I think it's the start of the night, but I have to.
Yeah. Just unmute your mic. I want to hear somebody talk.
Oh, okay.
I just want you to talk through Zoom instead of the phone.
Test, test, test.
You're still muted. Stand by, you're muted.
Oh.
Am I saying this every once in a while? Is there a feedback loop?
Hold on, I'm gonna turn it off now. Okay, try again.
Test, test, test. Is there a feedback loop?
I don't hear one. Do you hear one? Hello?
No. Do you want me to try through? Let me try through. I'm on, because I'm on my phone. Can you hear me through Zoom?
Yes, I can hear you through Zoom.
And you don't hear feedback loop?
I'm gonna hang up the phone.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
Test, test, test.
Um. Hey, Matt, let me sit you on, unmute yourself.
Matt, you wanna unmute yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. No feedback.
Do you want me to try broadcasting?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm just afraid that's gonna introduce an extra variable. Um. Nobody's gonna be able to find it, because I haven't published it anywhere.
Okay. So first of all, I'm gonna plug you with some new things. I'm sorry, is it on fade?
So I might have to hit this broadcast button at the top, or you can hit it, Ron.
Which one?
Do you see the practice mode?
Unbroadcast it?
Yeah, if you want to hit broadcast, I think that's what we're gonna need to practice the live stream.
All the time now broadcasting, all the tenders.
And that just means anybody who calls in.
And it's recording, and I don't hear. Hey, Jeff Locke, unmute yourself and talk. Give a second for feedback. Yes. Kinda soft there, Jeff.
Ah, it's tone.
Hello, Jeff. Hello, Jeff Locke, say something.
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I haven't, I need to find the volume on this to turn you up.
Okay. Okay, I'll turn it to, uh, just enough you can hear it. Turn off all of the mics in there, so feel far away on that feedback.
Oh, it just got really echoey on it for you.
For me?
Yep.
So it's probably my microphone.
Uh huh, I think it is.
My microphone, because we see TV is actually still. Doug was on too. He turned this off.
This broadcast is not working for some reason. I'm gonna need to try again.
Brenda's supposed to be calling me.
Okay. So, right now, it is on, it is just the, the live view. I'm gonna send you a link to it. It is just on the person who's active, so I'm gonna change the view, if you're okay with it, to gallery view.
Okay.
And it's not changing it for the view, though. It is just on the person who's active, so I'm gonna change the view, if you're okay with it, to gallery view.
There.
And it's not changing it for the view, though. It is just on the person who's active, so I'm gonna change the view, if you're okay with it, to gallery view.
There.
And it's not changing it for the view, though. It's just on the person who's active, so I'm gonna change the view, if you're okay with it, to gallery view, though. It's just on the person who's active. Oh my gosh! I'm gonna change the view, if you're okay with it. I think it's the live stream that's the problem.
Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Because I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah. So you, you want me to cancel the live stream?
Well, stop it. Now, how is it? How is it, Jeff Locke? Or Matt? Okay.
Um, I don't hear, I don't hear lag.
So it's the video?
The video's still live, though.
Oh.
Kept seeing myself on the video.
Yeah, the video's still live.
Okay.
I think the issue was is that I had the video up.
Oh.
I had it up, because I was watching it, and so it was playing on my computer, and then it was playing over the audio. Which I didn't think, I was trying to test it ineffectively.
Do I need to stop? Just let it mute, or do I just let it go?
Um, yeah, we can stop it. Um. Uh.
Want to stop?
No, we don't need to stop it, actually.
Yeah.
We're just gonna let it go. I'm not gonna publish it anywhere until we're close to meeting time starting. Yeah. And I'm gonna try to get the view to, to be gallery view.
Um.
That sounds good. Bye.
Okay. No, that. Awesome. Hey, Gary Turner, looks like you got in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
Okay, I'm not seeing my image on the screen again tonight. Are you seeing something behind my computer by chance?
I don't see any video for you.
Okay, well, I'm all right with that. So long as you can hear me. There he is, okay. Just start my video.
I have Kate over, so you can fix stuff, too.
So we need to mute when we're not participating, right?
That would be helpful, but I think we've figured it out. The video, Kate stopped one of them.
Okay.
Fixed that just about two minutes ago.
I did.
No. We don't have Randy Baker on, and I just kept sitting, sitting on this.
Did not get an invitation directly, you know?
Gary, when you have time, Karen has some minutes in her office to be assigned.
I'm sorry?
Gary Turner.
Yes.
Karen has minutes to be assigned in her office. When you stop by the city building, we'll connect with her.
Ah.
Good.
Okay, I need to increase my audio volume. What do I do?
Do you need to increase it on your end, or do you need to increase it on our end? Because you sound good for me.
No, I, I need to hear you better.
Um, however you turn up your volume on your computer normally, is how you would turn it up.
This is the little laptop.
So normally, it's on the top row buttons. Normally, you're on like F5 or F6. There's like a little volume button. If it's a laptop.
Yes, it's the lap, it's the HP that everybody has.
Oh, the Surface? If it's a Surface, it should be like F, F5 and F6. So you'll just hit, hit those buttons.
F5 and F6.
It looks like a little micro, it looks like a little speaker.
Right. Speak again. Ron, you speak.
I see you, yes.
Yep, okay.
Is that better?
Yes, yes. I hear you very clearly, Kate.
Okay.
Ron, I don't hear so clearly.
Yeah.
Hello, Larry Parker here.
Hi, Larry.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
I am superb.
Yay, I'm glad you're still superb.
Are you at home or are you down there?
I'm at home.
Me too.
Ron, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Bill.
This is Randy, can you hear me?
I can hear Randy.
Says it can't start my video because the host has stopped it.
Kate, he's showing up as Dr. Oler.
I know.
Just, but there he is.
I know, I see it.
Randy Parker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ron, can you hear me? Ron Oler.
I can't hear Ron.
I can't either.
Nope.
Ron, are you muted?
We can't hear you, Ronnie.
He's working on it.
There's Doug.
Can you guys hear me?
There's Kelly.
Yeah.
Hey, Kelly.
Hey, guys. Hey.
Glad to see everybody.
Good to see you.
Well, he learned. But just playing video games and watching TV beyond that. They're pretty bored. Saturday, we worked in the yard, and I put him to work. So.
Ronnie, we still can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Ron.
There's absolutely nothing. We can't hear a thing, Ronnie. Nope.
He's working on it.
He's working on it. It's been hard to motivate Carter. It's been, the whole thing's been difficult for him.
He'd speak clearer, we could read his lips.
Yeah, Ronnie.
Sign language.
Yeah. You look behind me, you'll see my longbow collection. See that in the back?
Woo, that's cool. You can see, look at this. That's all my parents' grandsons and greats, and there's 30 missing. Hold on, I don't know what just happened. Oh, there you go, see that?
Yeah.
All my parents', grandchildren, great-grandchildren, but there's 30 missing on there.
Wow.
Gosh.
Yeah.
Cool.
Ron's completely gone now.
Yeah.
Yep.
He's working on it.
Yeah, I'm hanging up my phone. I think he's working. Alrighty, can you hear me now?
Yay!
Barely.
Really loud, Ron.
Really loud for you?
Well, for all of us.
For all of us. There's Randy. Hey.
Hello, Randy.
Good.
I need to get the. Season, you know, up.
That was an awesome Impa cup.
Yeah, how about that? It's my favorite new cup.
Alright, I have the agenda up now. Randy's work first. Just put this up here.
This is Larry, trying to get back on.
I say Larry's, yeah, on the phone, right? There you are.
Yes.
Okay, I think we have everybody on. Randy, nobody else from our panel, are they? Can you hear me?
Jeff, Jeff around?
Randy, Jeff Capus is in the meeting in the city hall.
There's. There's our boy.
Randy, I see your sound should be on your phone. This can be blinded.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You want to move over to the phone, Randy? Your audio.
Hope you're still on?
We're, we're here, we're waiting on Randy to give his audio back. Randy, I'm still in it, it should be on your phone audio instead of computer audio. Um, if you can change that, I had a similar problem. You can call from your phone, Randy. Hello, Kate? Kate?
Ron, thanks for chairing the meeting tonight. For those who don't know, I asked him to chair it since he needed to be there for the finance committee meetings and the council meetings, so that I would not have to go to the building. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm on with a casual shirt on instead of a suit and tie. Good for you.
Sorry about that. That was my whole strategy.
Kate, are you still on here? Randy?
I am. Randy, your audio, just to explain the issue, your audio is syncing to your phone, a phone line, not your computer. So if you're calling in from a computer, if you're in the meeting from a computer, you just need to go down to the bottom left of the, the Zoom, the Zoom window, and choose a different audio selection. So there's a little microphone, and then a little up arrow next to that. You're gonna click that, and you're gonna say, "Switch to computer audio." Should be in the bottom, bottom options.
Awesome. That's good, so, yeah, it's phone audio.
You see that as an option? See that as an option? Otherwise, you're, you can call in and, and participate vocally with the phone.
And maybe still, except for phone.
So these would be, this is the information he needs.
The caller and phone numbers are just below that. They're just above that, look at the zoom. Yes, we got it. Yes. I mean, no, they're probably still on. Don't worry about it.
What number is this?
Is there any other number? No question. Yes.
That number is Larry?
I called in on my phone. This still seems to be working, but the audio switched to my phone for some reason.
Yes.
It was working, and then it switched to my phone. But I hadn't dialed in my phone yet.
Well, at least we can hear you now.
Yeah.
Larry Parker, you still on?
I'm still here.
Alright, everybody's on, we can get started. Since we're studying TV Disney Countdown. Good evening, and welcome to the April 6, 2020 meeting of the Board of Directors of Richmond Power Life. For the clerk, please call the room.
Here.
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 Here. Here.
Jane Bubba, no?
Here.
And Larry Parker.
Here.
Okay, good. So use your mic, man, on these. In your pocket were the minutes of our last regular meeting, March 6, 2020, and the special meeting, March 23, 2020. I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. One agenda, two agendas. Yes, who were the minutes of last meeting of March 16? Any additions or corrections?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Larry?
Yes.
John? Hi.
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 Hi. Hi.
I think that was it. Anyone oppose? Okay, minutes approved. Bills to be approved? The. Mr. Chairman? Yes, oh, Mr. Locke, yes, you were there. The finance committee had it earlier tonight and recommended the approval. I don't have the total with me here, though. Uh, so you might have the total on your agenda.
Agenda?
Five million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, sixty-five dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second. You go second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Those are paid. Good. Any unfinished, unfinished business to come before the board? Now, report by the general manager. Randy, you have the table.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Two items on the agenda tonight. First, we would like to award the bid on the 2020 compact SUV for the engineering department, as previously approved in the budget. Our trade-in is unit 70, which was a 2004 Ford Ranger. Um, we would like to, um, award that to Greg Hugler at Ford Fondi in Muncie, Indiana. Their total bid price, including the trade-in, was twenty-one thousand and ninety-two dollars. Um, Wessel Ford did bid on that as well, but, uh, even with the, um, my local option, their bid was still higher than that, at twenty-three, four sixty-five. Specs are the same.
Okay. Any questions for Randy on the bid for the 2020 compact SUV? And motion?
So moved.
Jeff Locke, uh, Jeff Capus got a motion here.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any oppose? It might be easier to say any oppose out of mine, you're on mine. None are opposed, so that's it, it's awarded. Thank you. Back to Randy.
Hey, thank you. Um, second on the agenda, we would like to award the bid on a new 2020 vacuum excavator truck for the line department, as previously approved in the budget. Uh, the trade-in is our old, uh, vacuum excavator, which was a 2014. We would like to award that to Southeastern Equipment Company out of Indianapolis. Their total bid price on that was three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, their turnaround on that delivery date was between ninety and a hundred and eighty days.
Now, about the budget, look, yes, we, our budget on that was four hundred and twenty thousand, correct?
Yes, right. And we did. And we did have one company that bid over that. But this Southeastern was, met the specs and was the lowest of the other three. Or the other two.
Any questions for Randy for the vacuum excavator?
Could you give us that number again, the, the total figure, purchase price?
Sure. Three hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Thank you.
Did you catch that?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second.
The motion on second to award the bid on 2020, I'm going to take the lowest responsible bidder, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Keep asking again afterwards, please.
Okay. Under the General Report, I would like to report that we are extending our stay-at-home hours that we've been working through the, through the month of April, kind of following the lead of others around the state and the governor as well. We had originally planned to get back to normal, working on April 13th, but we want to get beyond where the apex of this virus is and get on the other side of that and make sure we're doing everything safe. And we are still running skeleton crews. We run emergency outages as normal. Those of us that can work at home are working at home. Sometimes we only have maybe one person, maybe two persons in a department. The customer service office will remain closed during that period and open up again on May the 4th. The first is actually on a Friday.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the General Manager? Anything else you need to say, Randy?
Oh, just to remind folks that even though we have, you know, we're discontinuing disconnects and we're abolishing late fees for this month, doesn't mean you still don't have a bill to pay.
Yeah.
In fact, you know, if you are behind, what you don't want to do is get beyond this thing and have a bill that then you can't pay because it's filled up over, over some two or three or four, sometimes more months, if you are already behind when this started. So we would encourage you to pay what you can and try to get caught up on that before this expires on the, on May 1st, basically.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Any new business to come before the board? In the room?
For adjournment?
The adjourn, okay. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Nope, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Except for Randy for the City Council meeting in fifteen minutes.
So just stay on the line, right?
Yes. Yeah, we'll be back.
Okay.
Ron, can you? Ron?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Is there a lag in what I'm saying?
Just slightly, like half a second.
Okay, okay. All right. CM fifteen. CM fifteen.
Okay.
Wow.
Hello, Jane, can you say something for us? I'm mute. You want to try something? Keep talking, tell us a story.
Tell you a story?
Yes.
Okay. Real quick, we are still live streaming, I'm trying to stop it, but I just want to let everyone know that because I can't. I, because we haven't stopped the meeting. If we stop it, then we have to restart it and that, that is what officially stops the live stream. So, um.
So should we?
We might actually do that.
We need to start off and restart.
Um. No, just give me a second. Just if everyone could just mute for just half a second and just give me.
Okay.
Okay, that's again. It's the city.
I'm back.
Did anyone receive minutes from the March 16th and 23rd meetings? Hey Doug, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you too.
Okay.
I can hear you.
I don't have minutes from the March 16th or 23rd meetings, do you?
No.
Hold on, I'll look.
I've just checked my email, I don't find anything.
Hey Gary, I got them. Karen sent them.
Hey, I think I'm back.
Hey Gary. Karen sent them last Wednesday.
Anything you say and do, people watching online can hear you. Bill Engle, Jay Turner, everybody who's unmuted. We're still training live. Don't say anything you don't want somebody to know.
Yes, sir.
See that Phil Suzanne, Joey Purcell, Matt Evans, and somebody else. And I had a phone number. I'm calling this probably.
Does anybody have ordinance 24 and 25?
I got mine from the last meeting, I just basically recycled mine from the last meeting.
Okay. That's the only way I've got them too, I thought maybe there was, since they're on first reading.
Yeah.
Every now and then, somebody says, "Thank you for calling goodbye," and then it knocks me off the line. Has that happened to anybody else?
No, because we're online.
This technology is wonderful. 7:31, let's get going. This is Larry, I got knocked off again.
Hi Larry.
I can't understand it, every, about every five minutes, if no one's talking, it just hangs up for me.
Well, it should be getting started soon.
You may be ready to begin. All right, let's try it. Give them countdown. Good evening, welcome to the April 6th, 2020 meeting, the Council of the City of Atlanta. For the first three news call to.
Here.
Here.
Yeah, lockers. He's here. Here. Here.
Here.
So, thank you everyone for putting up with us tonight, especially the Council of the City of Atlanta. Following our emergency protocol, we don't have an usual agenda. We're going to talk about some ordinances that are coming through there. Before we just start, I would like to say, today, April 6th, 2020, is our 52nd emergency of our explosion. And also under all different powers, so somebody who needs to turn their mic, somebody. There we go, should be better. So, a different type of explosion if we, yes, grown by this thing. Take a moment of silence, and we'll think about our precious wonders, and I hope your professionals out there sitting as well. All right, thank you. In your packet was the minutes of our regular meeting, March 16th, 2020, for these two separate.
If there are no corrections, I move that we approve the minutes for our March 16th, 2020 meeting.
Second. Second.
Are we on or off? Again.
We can hear you Larry.
Good.
Ron, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you Ron.
We're having an issue with the phone line calling in and overtaking Dr. Oler's line, so we just need a minute to figure out what's going on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm back, thank you. So, we have a motion in the second for the March 16th meeting minutes. Except them as received, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As many so far, thank you. We also had a special in March 23rd, any additions or corrections to those?
Mr. President. There's no, if there's no additional corrections for the March 23rd special meeting minutes, I move that we approve.
Second.
Motion in the second for the March 23rd discussion.
Aye.
Aye.
Someone's raised their hand, and we get to our second, ordinance is on second meeting, that's when we'll take public comment. If somebody raised their hand, there's a problem. All right. Any questions for the mayor?
I can't hear him.
Whenever there's just a law and nothing happens, it knocks me right off this phone line.
How about that? As you know, a lot of our administrative staff is working remotely, we have also a preparation of work plans in place for our labor crews. And I just want to take a moment, as I'm talking about that, to really thank all of our labor workers throughout the city. It's really quite remarkable that through this difficult time, that we've not seen an interruption in our trash pickup, cleaning of our sewer water, wastewater, mowing, re-trimming, street repair. So, our labor crews are to be highly committed for the work they've been doing, they've been really out there and doing a great job, and I thank them very much for that work. We are taking some extra precautions, as many of you may know, the governor did deliver a new executive order today that called for some more closures. So, we're putting together some executive order language between myself and the county commissioners to echo some of that. To follow up with the recommendations coming in from our health professionals, professionals, and the guidelines coming in from the state. Today, we are taking some extra precautions in our parks department to reduce contact with touch surfaces. So, you will see basketball rims come down today, playground entrances barricaded off. Any of our areas that have fencing or gates are being locked, that includes the skate park, tennis nets will be coming down, pickleball nets will not be going up. Our golf courses will be completely closed, that'll be the driving manager, Glenn Miller, and the full golf course, Island Lake. Our senior center will remain closed, but we'll just see a lot more restrictions coming to our touch surfaces. I know it is very confusing, because people are being pressured to be outside and get some fresh air, we often do a stay-at-home order. But we do need to really take some extra precautions to reduce touch, reduce contact with touch surfaces, so we are doing that. So, we are asking community to refrain from utilizing our playgrounds if needed, or if they're touched surfaces during this time. So, you'll see that in the press release, and our Wayne County Commissioners are recommending that all playgrounds and golf courses across the county also be closed at the membership. And that goes for the general public and those that hold memberships to that area. You will see more language coming out in the near future about other steps that we are taking to protect the community during this time, and that's what I have for you today. As you all know, this is a climate-changing environment with more restriction and guidelines coming in every day. Any, any questions on that before I go to my next subject?
I have a question.
I do want to take one more minute to share with you some very good news, yes, sir.
I have a question. Mayor Snow, can you? Mayor Snow? It's Kelly, can you hear me?
Kelly, I can hear you, but I think they can hear you.
One second. Yes, Councilor Nicholson.
Okay.
Councilor Cruz Nicholson, did you have a question for me?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Will people be able to still utilize, I know a lot of people walk their dogs on the golf course at Glenn Miller? Are they still able to do that, or is it just shut down completely?
We are not fully closing all of our green space, we are however barricading that parking lot to prevent people from gathering there. If you can maintain social distance through taking walks, that's fine.
Sure.
We are trying very hard to keep our parks open to the public, because we know people need a little green space and they need some ability to take walks. But if we see too many people in one area and congregating, we'll have to start restricting access to other areas.
Okay, great, that was it.
Right now, walking will be okay.
Okay, that was it.
Thank you. Were there any other questions on that subject?
No.
I do want to share some, some good news, after an extensive and thorough process for a police chief, you may have seen the news today. It is with heavy hearts that we say goodbye to Police Chief Jim Brannum on April 24th. Jim has been a tremendous chief of this department, and I'll have a lot more to talk about when it does come time to bid farewell and retirement to Chief Brannum. Upon the announcement of his retirement, we began an extensive and thorough process to select a new chief. And I'm proud to report to you today that Major Mike Britt, lowest of the top, will exemplarally feel the pain of it. All of them applying. Mike has 24 years of experience on the department, and vast experience in leadership in policing. And I want to take this time to give the podium to incoming Chief Mike Britt, and just let him introduce himself to you. I know this is the most cumbersome possible way that I can introduce to you a new police chief, but it is the circumstances we are, it is the circumstances we are forced to deal with today, so that, so we'll make the best of it.
Parker, back on.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, that's all I have today.
Can you guys hear Ron?
No.
No.
Not a word.
I can't see him either.
We had another phone call kickoff, give Ron just a second to get logged back in.
Got better? No, thank you, this is funny noise. Okay, let me fix it. One particular person was calling as in, same be in the code area, it was not being altered when they called in. Ordinances in first reading, we have a motion. Mr. Ross.
I can't hear anything.
Have a motion in the second to suspend roles, and your ordinances 24, 20, 20, and 25, 20, 20. If I try to run them, if they would say aye.
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 All right, first reading, question?
Ordinance number 24, 2001, appropriation ordinance, ordinance number 44, dated 2019, known until 2021, filed ordinance.
Mr. Ross, any other ones, question?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a request to change a job title and job description. If you recall, a few years back, we created a position that did not include a development partner, that was following, or currently, a coordinator. That is a position that has really grown and changed, and there is a lot more to be added to that position, and I would also like to see that position moved and through the mayor's office. I can get into more of the details this evening in this presentation, or I can save these details for the following committee, to facilitate this meeting, whichever is your pleasure.
I would prefer you'd saved it so we could hear.
Yes. I second that.
Okay. All right.
I can't hear.
This is for the fire.
Yes. Two things, first, this is a, there is a script here, this is not for salary, this is, we talked about this.
Yes.
Before, this one's a little bit different, doesn't fall on your salary, and I believe Chief Purcell will be attending this, he assumes.
Yes. He wasn't here.
There he is.
Thank you, Purcell, you're up.
Thank you. President Oler, honorable council members, I am asking tonight for your consideration of ordinance number 25, 2020. This ordinance re-appropriates funds from the 2019 budget out of the First Response Non-Reverting Fund. These projects and estimated costs are as follows. Station 3 remodel, addressing emergency medical personnel now running out of that station. It will add five bedrooms and a pair of new bathroom shower facilities. The current bedroom facilities will become an enlarged dayroom to accommodate the additional members running out of that station now. This project was held up due to the inability to find the original agreement with the arboretum delaying the permits for the project. The project was funded last year at $430,000. The current estimate for this project is approximately $325,000. Thus, a reduction in this reappropriation. The second project is the replacement of Engine 3, following a modified apparatus replacement plan. Modified to, due to last year's new rescue pumper being delayed for months, thus throwing off the replacement plan schedule. We are asking to reappropriate $250,000. The cost of this project is estimated at $575,000. The balance of the monies for this project will be leveraged with a lease in an amount of approximately $80,000. The balance of the monies for this project will be leveraged with a lease in an amount of approximately $8,000 annually beginning in the 2021 budget. Finally, we are requesting $250,000 in additional funds for the building of the Israel David Edoan Police and Fire Training Facility. This project is estimated at approximately 1.3 million. We currently have $500,000 in the 2020 budget, donations in the amount of $475,000. This appropriation will bring the current budget to 1.175 million with a guarantee of the additional funds being donated by a local business owner. This project is currently in the final stages of the design and awaiting the bid process. This request represents a total of $825,000. The projected balance of the first response fund at 2020 years end is $2,188,000 inclusive of these projects. Thank you for your consideration of this appropriation ordinance.
That projected balance includes using this fund, correct?
Yes.
I think this will be referred to finance committee two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Give me some second. This is for Matt Evans, I believe. This is the zone.
We do have a guest, a guest speaker, Mark Quinn, in the attendee section. If you could be unmuted, please, so we could present and overview the ordinance request. Thank you. Mark, you should be good to go.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. So at U-Haul there, the Kmart building, we're trying to turn that into a U-Haul center where we would utilize that facility for self-storage, truck rental, trailer rental and propane sales at that facility and kind of grow our presence there in Richmond from our old location up the street to the new location there on the west side and take the building that Kmart was previously occupying and transition it to a U-Haul center. And we're asking for the zoning change so that we can have our uses permitted there. I'm open for any questions you may have as far as, you know, our purpose or what we're doing. You know, anything you may have that I can try to answer, anybody on council has any questions.
Mr. President?
I just sent you the, yes.
My only question to Mark is, um, will you be presenting landscaping, uh, plans to us?
Yeah, I believe Matt has the landscaping plans.
And Bill, if I may, when I go over the plan commission rapport, I can share my screen and everybody can see what was submitted over to me.
Thank you.
Mark, we have a question from Counselor Jeff Capa. What are your plans to do with the east side location once you move?
Um, it would, it would stay open. We would continue to run that one as well. So we would, we would run both facilities at the same time. If, if, if anything, we would run it unmanned, meaning that we would have a housekeeper there and it would all be storage in an unmanned facility. But it, it's the first year or two, it would be manned completely. As long as financially it would, you know, stay afloat, then yes, we would, we'd keep them both, but we'd never sell it.
Okay, yes, thank you.
President?
Yes, Mr. President?
What are the plans for the gas station out front?
Originally, I thought we would demolish it and take it down completely, but I believe we would just image it to appear with our name and logos on it. And it would really just be a station for maybe keeping some supplies or something. But really, that, that piece of it would be just really not being used for anything besides maybe parking some equipment underneath it to do repairs out of the elements, out of the rain, uh, you know, that sort of thing in a shaded area.
So I would ask Matt, how is the landscape planned screening that?
Yeah, and if I may, I think a lot of the landscaping that's relevant to this site is in terms of the mature trees that are in the very front, front of the property facing US 40 West, which you'll see when I share my screen. I would say, given the height and everything of them, that they screen it pretty substantially. They even do have some pictures from different street views where you can see mainly the gas station's kind of the main point of view there. Um, and it's pretty, uh, it's kind of hard to describe exactly how hidden it is, but it is partly screened from the road, but not, not fully.
I would say not. It's pretty evident as you drive by.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I don't know the exact distances, but there's probably 20 to 30 feet in between each tree. At the lower end, maybe more than that.
Any other questions for Mark? Matt, you want to share that plan now?
Yeah, absolutely. Do you know, I'll see that?
Oh.
Almost, yeah.
Got it. Okay, got you. So, um, the majority of landscaping requirements would be fulfilled by the existing mature trees and shrubs on site. Mark and I did discuss the plans to put some new parking lot island trees, which would be required for a parking lot of that size, which are highlighted directly to the north of the gas station. And I could, I think I should, you should be able to see my mouse. I'm hovering over those now. And there are also existing tree stands to the rear of the property up on the north and to that western sideline as well, which are pretty substantial.
Any other questions for Matt? All right, Matt, you stop sharing this.
Okay.
What? I think I do have a question for Matt. Now, did I understand, is that a landscape plan that you've developed or is that one that they've submitted?
That's one that they submitted.
Okay.
Yeah, and I had forwarded them our landscaping requirements. We have general, the landscaping requirements aren't specific to the industrial commercial zoning district that they are applying for. They're generally, uh, general non-residential landscaping.
Okay.
All right, councilors, if you have any more questions, I'll ask everybody there to make their minds. We have two people, ten days on the line. I'm going to pull up the 977-2934 about that person.
And President?
Yes.
That, that should be Gordon Moore who is presenting the ordinance 14.
Okay. Who is 977, you're muted, Gordon, right? Who is 977-2934?
That's Larry Parker.
Okay, all right, Larry. Any questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Anyone in the audience listening to speak for this? No? Do we have a second to vote? The motion and second to the votes, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
You opposed, no?
Mr. President? I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 132020 to third and final reading, read by title only.
Second.
Motion in the second, suspended rules and advance ordinance 132020 to third and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The first. No opposed? Okay, third reading. Any final comments by councilors? I will say I am pleased that we want to find a use for this former Kmart building. I know I'm not further than state or other people in the city for a decade. Feel for the last nine, finally passed on very pleased, something's on that, this is the city, one, becoming a problem. Court called on?
Aye.
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 Jeff Ross, you're muted, Jeff. Jeff Ross is muted. He said aye. Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Larry, let me get back to Larry.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Is it shores again, Matt? Or just Gordon Moore? 797.
My apologies.
Matt's unmuted. I think Gordon's unmuted. Are they there, Gordon?
Yes.
Anything you want to tell us about this?
So this property is owned by the Whitewater I Center. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we rezoned the property immediately to the north so they could construct a new office building and a new parking lot. And at that time, they had a lease agreement with the church to the north uh, for approximately 90 parking spaces. That church is being offered for sale now and they have canceled the lease. Uh, therefore creating a need for additional parking for their employees. So we're requesting that go from M2 to LC. Um, we will have to get indot approval with the new driveways that we're proposing. Uh, the buffering all around it, uh, will comply with the north corridor overlay, all the landscaping. So I will answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Gordon. Any questions for Gordon?
Mr. President?
Yes.
What's, I need the correct address of this. On our agenda, it says 1924 Chester Boulevard, and I have 1824 Chester Boulevard.
No, the agenda is incorrect. We want to assist correct. 1824 is correct on the ordinance, not on the agenda.
Thank you.
1824. Any questions for Gordon? I'm looking at the phone. No one else has called in on the phone. Anyone in the audience listening to speak in favor of opposition?
Move for in gross, Matt.
Second.
Aye.
Second, in gross, ordinance 1320, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Get some stuff.
I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 142020 to third and final reading, read by title only. Second.
Listen in a second. Yeah. Splitter rolls. Oh, in favor, say aye.
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 Any final comments to council? Not in favor of all?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff Ross?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Jane Beller?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, thank you. The last time, um, when the major stood up there and spoke, people online could not hear. Did you come to your computer and speak on your computer, your computer, on your microphone? Just. Or do that, yes. Let him have your computer and microphone. There's WC TV's picking up the podium mic, correct? So we just need them online to be able to. Good deal. All right, major's on. He's muted. Your mic's not muted on there, is it? Standby. He's not muted. I will mute you.
Anybody here?
There you are.
Ordinance 15-20.
One quick second. Everybody else, please, I'm in U-Haul. Major, you have to go. Good luck, man.
Ordinance number 15-2020, it's, it's an ordinance authorizing city rich to receive donations for the police department, uh, different programs. It's referred to earlier finance committee as a housekeeping amendment or issue. Through the center of the year. Throughout the year, we received donations through mostly the K9, some other specialized program. Request approval of this ordinance.
Yes. And Bill Lingle, could you hear that? All of you person talk.
No.
Okay, one second. Say something, Bill. Come back, Bill.
Yes, I, I couldn't hear a word he said.
He's unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes.
All right, let's start from the beginning.
Yes.
Sorry.
Ordinance number 15-2020, it's a special ordinance authorizing city rich to receive donations for the police department program. This is known in finance committee as a housekeeping issue. This is something that we do every year. Different events throughout the year draw donations to the police department. Like to request approval of this ordinance. So they can donate.
Okay. While you're here. Let me finish this one. Do we have? We have noted attendees online. Other than us. Any other questions for the major?
I don't have any questions, but I would just like to congratulate Chief, the new chief on his appointment. I couldn't hear him the first time he spoke, but congratulations, chief.
Congratulations, chief. Thank you, Mr. Lingle. All right, the morning audience, who's free to speak for this? No? The motion to in gross. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In gross?
Mr. President? I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance 152020 to third and final reading, read by title only.
Second.
Motion in the second, suspended rule on ordinance 152020, third and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 You opposed? Third reading? Again, this is just the end of speaking for giving a set of donations. Any other comments by council? Court called on?
Aye.
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 Jeff, what? I voted aye, I can't hear, who said aye?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Aye. Back to the major?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty deals with something that we had budgeted for for this year, we originally budgeted sixty thousand dollars, like the ballistic. The ballistic vest for the SWAT team. These vests that they currently use are a pretty old amount of date, it's past time to just be updated. As I've mentioned, we have budgeted sixty thousand dollars for this, uh, our normal equipment budget. Through a territorial, oh, yeah, it's sole source territory, we respect Safari Land equipment, bands outdoors, it's the territorial dealer for Safari Land equipment. After Major Bales spent quite a bit of time working on the bid, fifteen separate sets, the price was locked at forty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. Quite a savings. As far as the grant goes, it's an equipment grant to the Department of Justice, and it's a matching grant. Having said already, we have budgeted the money forward with the purchase, and request council's approved to seek the Department of Justice matching that for this project.
Thank you, I should have mentioned, I don't know why this one, what's the finance committee, Jeff, do you have any comments? He just muted himself.
Finance committee didn't meet earlier, my screen says I'm muted, Ron.
You're not now.
Okay, finance committee met earlier with Counselor Lower, Counselor Kappa. They had fifty-eight thousand, I believe, budgeted for this year, and it's, the major said they've got the price down to forty-four thousand. The costs for the tactical gear, as he talked, talked about, has a lifespan of about five years, and one thing that was brought up in finance committee was, next time they start getting to the end of their lifespan, is for them to come to finance and counsel maybe a year beforehand, so we can budget money, so they're never outdated in the future. But finance committee has recommended approval of ordinance number sixteen, twenty twenty.
All right, thank you. Thank you, this ordinance on second reading in public hearing, there is no one calling in attending. And no one in the audience to speak in favor of opposition. Motion in the second, so in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose?
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules and advance ordinance sixteen, two thousand twenty, to third and final reading, read by title only.
Second.
Motion in the second, suspend the rule, the vast, ordinance sixteen, twenty twenty, to third and final reading, all in favor, say aye.
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 You oppose? Any pose? Can't hear her, Ryan. You just read the title. All right, any further comments by counsel? No?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Jane?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Counsel, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Move for adjournment.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
You want to pose? To adjourn, thank you.
I think this is great, we should do all our meetings this way.
Yeah, because you get to be at home, you're living room, instead of a suit and tie. Next time we'll broadcast all you out there that can see you, dressed up.
We've got to get those mics.
Stop the recording, I hope.
Agreed, agreed, Gary.
My word, you can't hear what he said. Have a good one, everybody.
Bye, be safe.
You too.
Bye-bye.